Good evening. The Board will now reconvene in open session at 7:06 PM on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, in the Plano ISD Administration Building. My name is Ms. Bender and I'm President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the District's two major ongoing goals: ensure continued improvement in student learning and ensure efficient use of financial resources and budgeting. Let me begin by introducing my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Sarah Bonzer, Superintendent of Schools; Dr. Teresa Williams, Chief Operating Officer; Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary; and Trustee Tammy Richards. Seated to my right are Board Vice President Dr. Yoram Solomon; Trustee David Stolli; Trustee Jerry Chambers; Trustee Angela Powell; and Executive Assistant to Superintendent and Board of Trustees Sharon Nowak. Ms. Bonzer, will you verify that we are in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding the notice for this meeting?
Thank you, President Bender. This meeting has been posted in compliance with provisions of the Open Meetings Act.
At this time, Board Member Jerry Chambers will offer tonight's inspirational message.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. On this National Election Day, we meet to determine how to better our society through the advancement of public education. Let's reflect on the words of founding individuals who have not only created our system of government and its system of election, but also had some thoughts on education. The first one is John Adams. "Laws for the education of youth, especially of the lower class of people, are so extremely wise and useful that to a humane and generous mind, no expense for this purpose would be thought extravagant." He continued and said in a later document, "The whole people must take upon themselves the education of the whole people and be willing to bear the expenses of it. There should not be a district of one mile square without a school in it, not founded by a charitable individual but maintained at the public expense of the people themselves." Thomas Jefferson said, "I know no safe depository of the ultimate powers of the society but the people themselves, and if we think them not enlightened enough to exercise their control with a wholesome discretion, the remedy is not to take it from them, but to inform their discretion by education. This is the true corrective of abuses of constitutional power." He also said later, "Instead of an aristocracy of wealth that can do more harm and danger than benefit to society, to making an opening for the aristocracy of virtue and talent, which nature has wisely provided for the direction of the interests of society and scattered with equal hand through all its conditions, is deemed essential to a well-ordered republic. So among their many solutions for assuring our nation will never fail to a tyranny of a few, with an emphasis on the education for all and a belief that all had virtue and talent worthy of this education. May be mindful of their vision."
Thank you, Jerry. This evening, the Board welcomes two award-winning floral design students from Plano West Senior High. That is Carley Nelson and Karina Fay. These students competed in an onsite floral design competition at the East Texas State Fair and brought back a grand championship and third place. Students, would you please come to the front of the room here? We are delighted that you were able to be here with us this evening to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, we will take a moment to find out more about you. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So students, would you take a moment and introduce yourselves and tell us how long you've been in floral design?
I'm Karina Fay.
I'm Carley Nelson. And we've been in floral design for two years. Last year, we were in reg floral design and this year, advanced floral design. We had the opportunity to go to Tyler, Texas to compete in the East Texas State Fair floral competition. And so, just a little about that, we got a bucket of random flowers and we had 45 minutes to create a design from those flowers. And so, we came up with our first design and that got us to the last round, the finals. And then there, we created like a bouquet and we've never done that before. And so, that's where we got first place and third place.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
So floral design is part of our career in technical education programming. It's one option that students have to enjoy and I'm glad that you two ladies exercised that option. It's also a program that we use to engage our senior citizens as well when they have an opportunity and they've signed up to be part of our RSVP program, they've come to learn how to do floral design also. And that helps us to keep them connected to our school system. Trustees, do you have any words that you want to share with these two professional floral design students?
I'd just say congratulations and keep pursuing that. That's a great little living to have if you want to be a florist. I think that'd be so much fun. Good luck.
Well, one of her mother, one of the girls has a mother who is a florist.
Sounds like a natural.
Anyone else? All right, congratulations and thank you for being here. Did we get pictures? Debbie, are we good with pictures? Okay. All right, I know that you girls are busy, so you're welcome to stay with us or you're welcome to leave at your leisure. We have a few more special recognitions on the agenda for this evening. In addition to the state winners in floral design who led the pledge, we're honoring students in the scrolling PowerPoint before you for their accomplishments at the state and national levels. Let me highlight a few of them. In science, at the Texas Junior Academy of Science, Plano students won all six grand prizes, nine first-place awards, 18 second-place awards, 17 third-place, and nine honorable mentions. Six Plano ISD eighth graders were named in the Broadcom Masters Top 300. Academic awards. 191 Plano ISD seniors received commended recognition in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship. Thirty-two seniors were named as 2019 Scholars by the College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program. Are any of these students that I described here tonight, let's give them a round for all of these accomplishments. We also have an unusual and very special recognition this evening. We are honored, we are honoring students and staff who helped during an emergency and saved a life. Superintendent Sarah Bonzer will introduce this recognition.
Thank you, President Bender. Some of you may have heard of this on the news and some of you may have not, but it's my pleasure to share a little bit of information about the circumstances around what happened on October 11th at one of our campuses when an adult volunteer collapsed in the Plano Senior High School parking lot. Clark High School sophomores Kristi Winkler and Riley Winkler. Kristi and Riley, are you here? Will you stand? Okay, so that I can see you as I'm telling this story. And it's a real story, so that's... And Levi Helms, Levi, thank you. They were at Plano Senior High School at the moment and they quickly noticed the collapse and acted. Time was critical. The students knew that this potentially was a life-threatening situation and notified the Clark High School Athletic Director, Tom Kaylee. Tom, there you go, who is certified in CPR and first aid. The girls got the AED, or the Automated External Diffurbulator, from the campus and got help from the Plano High School Athletic Trainer, Jaclyn Foley. And Coach Kaylee began to administer CPI while the AED was ready. No heartbeat was detected until after the AED was administered. These people were in the right place at the right time with the right training to save a life. Also joining us for this recognition is Timothy Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan is the Clark High School Health Sciences Teacher who instructed our students in CPR. If you would please come to the front of the room for a photo and let us welcome and honor you at this time.
I'm Kristi Winkler.
I'm Levi Helms.
I'm Tim Sullivan, the Health Science Teacher.
Tom Kaylee, the Athletic Director at Clark High School.
I'm Jaclyn Foley, the Athletic Trainer at Plano Senior.
I'm Julie Kuhn, the volunteer that they saved the life of. Very, very appreciative of this whole team of people. And I've given many years, I think going on 14, as a volunteer for PISD. Our kids have, one's already graduated out, one's still in. But PISD is giving back, just as I've given back to PISD, so I'm very grateful.
It is truly the Board's pleasure to honor each of you with a certificate of appreciation, recognition of your swift and caring actions. Vice President Dr. Yoram Solomon will present these certificates to each of you. We applaud all of you for stepping up with the presence of mind and the skills that have allowed one of our community members to be here with us tonight. Ms. Kuhn, thank you for joining us. Mr. Kuhn, thank you for joining us. Are there any family members that came in support of one of the staff or students present? Maybe moms, dads. Could you stand for a minute? I'm sure you feel very proud.
I want to just close. I think Fred Rogers said it best when he said, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people helping.'" This may not have been in the news, although I think it did make the news, but certainly you are the helpers. When there was a need, you stepped up. We are thankful to you, we are proud of you, and we are thrilled to honor you. In a time when happy endings sometimes don't seem to make the news, your teamwork, your use of the expertise that you've learned, and your caring have made all the difference in the world. So thank you for being the helpers.
Again, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. So you're welcome to depart at your leisure. Board members, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to say something quickly to the students and the staff. This was an amazing true story. I think it's a beautiful, amazing true story. And I'm so proud of our students and staff because to me, you're everyday heroes for us. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver, are there any scouts to be recognized this evening?
Thank you, President Bender. We do have two, Troop 181 and Troop 219. Thank you for being here. Please stand.
Please stand. We'll welcome you. Thank you for being here. We're now moving to Item 6, which is the introduction of public comment. We now move to the public comment portion of our agenda for topics that are related to Agenda Items. Public comment cards are accepted from 6:00 to 7:00 PM and cards are not transferable to other speakers. Thirty minutes have been allotted for public comments and 15 minutes will be allocated at this time for speakers addressing topics on the agenda. At the conclusion of the agenda, 15 minutes will be provided for speakers addressing the Board about non-Agenda topics. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to represent their views before the Board. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for the public comment session regarding Agenda topics?
We do. We have three for an Agenda topic and one for non-Agenda.
Okay. So for the Agenda topics, I'll read, actually, this will apply to both Agenda and non-Agenda topics, a few instructions. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. If you are not finished speaking at the end of your time, I will kindly interrupt you so that we can move to the next person. Due to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, the Board is not authorized to discuss a subject that is not on the agenda. The Board may only make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, or refer the speaker to a staff member for more information. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, the Board will not allow personally identifiable information regarding a student and will not hear a complaint against a public officer or employee. These issues must be addressed through local grievance policies. Ms. Oliver, would you please call our first speaker to the podium?
Thank you. I'd like to call, I'm going to try to pronounce this correctly, Armina Laptikura.
Okay, are we here? So come over to this podium, to my right and your left. So our Secretary, Ms. Humphrey, will set a timer for three minutes and at the two-minute mark, so when you have one minute left, she'll give you a little sign.
Or I may say one minute and don't let that stop you, one minute.
And then you'll have one minute left and then if you're not done at one minute, then I'll be asking you to wrap it up. Okay? Please begin.
My name is Abby Moico.
My name is Conwin.
My name is Armina Laptikura.
And we are students at Plano Senior High School.
We have been informed that the School Board is forming a five-year strategic plan and we would like to present this resolution and read a highlighted excerpt of the legislature. The Texas House of Representatives adopted H.R. 2090, expressing support for green schools during the 85th Session of the Legislature in May 2017. It states the following. "Whereas students who attend green schools gain greater knowledge of sustainability, a concept of rising importance in the competitive 21st century economy, moreover, the building becomes an interactive teaching tool, creating multiple opportunities for curriculum innovation and hands-on, project-based learning. And whereas while promoting good health and creating an environment that is optimally conducive to teaching and learning, green schools save energy and money, and the benefits they bring contribute significantly to prosperity and quality of life in the communities they serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 85th Texas Legislature hereby expresses its support for green schools and encourage all Texans to learn more about the advantages they provide." In conclusion, we would like to propose the addition of an environmental board within the school district for this five-year plan. That way, the student body can address their environmental concerns with that group of administrators instead of taking it to the General Committee of the school district. This serves to lift the work burden of the school administration by distributing the community's sustainability and ecological concerns to this potential environmental panel of directors. Please take this idea into consideration as it can help spur the growth of these green schools and can also make Plano ISD more environmentally minded in preparation for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for Agenda topics.
Thank you. We will now move to the Consent Agenda. These are items of a routine nature that are grouped together under one action item. Board members, are there any requests to remove items from the Consent Agenda for further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask to remove Item I, recommendation of members of the District Textbook Adoption Committee to be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Board Vice President Yoram Solomon has requested that Item I be removed from the Consent Agenda. This item will be moved to the category called Items for Discussion and Action and we will make it Item B3, so we will be discussing it separately and it'll be discussed by the Board at that time. There will be no discussion on this item at this time. Are there any other requests to remove items from the Consent Agenda for further consideration? Administration has requested that Consent Agenda Item 1, which is RFP 2018-041, access control systems, intrusion alarm systems, and security services technician be removed at this time. It will be resubmitted at a future Board meeting. Therefore, I'm requesting the removal of Item D1 to be eliminated from this meeting as well. We will now proceed to vote on the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Consent Agenda, removing Items D1 and Item I.
Do I have a second?
A second?
I have a motion by Yoram Solomon, a second by Angela Powell, that the Board of Trustees approves the Consent Agenda, removing Item D1 and Item I. We will now proceed to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under Category 8 and it is a public hearing. At this time, Randy McDowell, Chief Financial Officer, will give a brief report on the school's Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas called FIRST Rating. Afterwards, the Board of Trustees will receive public input regarding this topic. Randy?
Yes, thank you, President Bender. So the next item is a public hearing on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, the Plano ISD's rating. This 2017-2018 rating is based upon an analysis of staff, student, and financial data that was reported for the 2016-2017 school year. Each school district in Texas is required to announce and hold a public hearing to distribute a financial management report and those are located at the back for anyone in the audience that would like a copy of the full report. This report explains the district's performance under each of the 15 indicators in the school's FIRST system. The determination of the rating is established by meeting standards within each indicator. A superior rating is the highest standard and is only given to the districts that score between 90 and 100. And I will let Ms. Linda Madden, our Executive Director of Financial Services, present the FIRST rating and I'll let her indicate what the district's score is. Thanks, Linda.
She's pretty well stolen all my thunder here, but okay. So this, it is a set of uniform indicators, as Randy said, and it's used across the state by all school districts in the state. So the rating is based on the 2016-17 school year tonight. So it is student, staff, budget information that we reported to TEA in the fall of 2016 as part of the Public Education Information Management System, reporting system that all school districts in Texas use. And then our actual financial data is from the audit report for the year ended June 30 of 2017. And currently, that is the most recent current audit report completed by the district. So as Randy indicated, the four-tier rating system of the A, B, C, and F stayed in place for this year and we're pleased to announce that the school district received a superior rating with a perfect score of 100 this time. So there are five critical indicator questions that are asked each year and we need to be able to answer yes to all of those five indicators. They focus on timely submission of our annual financial report, which is our annual audit report, that we had an unmodified opinion from our external auditor, no material weaknesses in internal controls, that we were in compliance with all of our debt payments and agreements at the end of the fiscal year, and that we are consistently making timely payments to Texas Retirement System, Texas Workforce Commission, the IRS, and other governmental entities of this nature that we pay payments to routinely. And then the final question is, was the total unrestricted net asset balance in the government activities column in the statement of net assets greater than zero? So that particular item is part of the government-wide financial presentation that adheres to the GASP 34 reporting requirements. Our answer to that is resoundingly yes for this particular report. When we talk to you next week about the audit report for 2017-18, you will notice some definite changes in the net position statement due to the implementation of GASP 75, which is the post-employment benefits, particularly the TRS Care Program. So we'll see how this one goes going forward because certainly we are not the only school district impacted by implementation of GASP 75. But for this report, we're a solid yes on all of those, a perfect score there. And then there are 10 other indicators and you have received a copy of the financial management report that has a printout in it of these financial solvency indicators and we were able to receive the full point counts on all of those for this year. We just highlight briefly this indicator seven, that is maybe sort of our challenge indicator. It's one that fluctuates from year to year. On the last report that we discussed with you, we were only able to achieve six points on this indicator, but this year, we achieved the full 10 points. Any ratio higher than three receives the full 10 points. Our ratio of current assets to current liabilities was 3.44 for the 2016-17 audit. You see, there are three different items that we indicate are part of the reason for the increase in our current assets, but certainly the primary reason is that the first bond sale of the 2016 bond authorization was sold in August of 16, so that was at the very beginning of the 2016-17 year. So that was for 257.2 million plus the premium, which was $300 million. So that was a definite boost to our current assets there and we were able to have a very strong ratio. And that concludes our report unless you have any questions.
If I remember correctly, last year, we received a 96?
Yes, we did. We got only six points on this particular indicator, so 100 minus six, I think we had 94 for our score.
94? And which one was that, the indicator in which we received?
It was this, it was this indicator, the current assets to current liabilities. So the 15-16 audit report was before we had our bond election or as we were having that in May of 16. The fiscal year ended in June of 16, so we had issued no bonds and we didn't have, you know, any funds from a bond sale. So recapture, we have to accrue for July and August since our fiscal year end is June 30th. And accrued salaries go into the denominator of this calculation. They increase our current liabilities. So they certainly impact a district's, a Chapter 41 district's ability to receive a perfect So, they certainly impact a chapter 41 district's ability to receive a perfect score of 10 on this indicator. And our aggressive debt repayment schedule, which is a good thing, and I think we highlighted it last year, that we think that is a good thing, that is in our control, but it also increases our current liabilities here and goes against us in achieving a perfect 10 on this indicator. At this time, stars all aligned, and we're great with that.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
At this time, we will have a public hearing. And any individual requesting to speak regarding the school's Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas rating signed up prior to the start of this meeting. Ms. Oliver, do we have any comment cards for the public hearing?
We do not.
Okay. So, since we have no comment cards, this is the end of the public hearing. We will now move to Section 9, titled Reports. We have three reports this evening that ensure governance and administrative support of district goals. Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives, will provide an update on the district's strategic planning initiative. Carla?
Thank you, President Bender. I do have a status report this evening and a quick overview that will bring us up to date on our strategic planning process in our district. Following the School Board and the Cabinet's work of dating, I'm sorry, of drafting beliefs, vision, and the pillars for our new strategic plan, which will be long-range, the district hosted our stakeholders in a very energizing two-day retreat on October 18th and 19th. The strategic planning team explored Plano ISD's current and future needs and collaborated to establish goals to help set the course for the district's future. Again, this is just a quick overview, and then I have a couple pieces to share with you. So, now, following that retreat, we are in the process of creating action teams that will then carry out the next phase of the strategic planning work. So, in your report, you should see that there's a timeline and actions. And right now, I'll bring your attention to November 6th or 27th, which is a progress report to the Board, so it shows we're about halfway through the process. And that's if you've had a moment to review those documents. I know that you have. So, we're about midway through, it's just above the upper half of the page, and we're likely to adjust a few of the dates later in November and December, but right now, that's where we're tracking on our timeline. And then, with that, I'd like to talk a little bit more about our retreat, if you would indulge me for just a moment. Again, that was on October 18th and 19th, and we had a total of about 75 people attend that retreat, and I think the most interesting, and again, energetic, part of that whole event was the balance of groups that were represented. It was very, it was cross-referenced to both nonprofit, corporate, volunteer, parent, student, staff, administrator, teacher, all the levels that you can imagine, and that's also a piece of your report. I would, for the audience's benefit, like to say that we had 30 members of our community representing that category. For the district, which would include those of you on the School Board that served on this committee, which there were three, seven campus administrators, and the rest comprised a total of 45 of district staff members who were a part of this as well. And of the organizations represented, there's just a smattering of those in your report that show both corporate citizens, small and large businesses, as well as nonprofits, and higher learning. So, that was a part of the mix of that day. So, that, those categories actually served that 75-member committee that came together that day. And so, tonight, one special treat that I had for you that I thought would kind of bring a little oomph to our progress report was I'd like to introduce one of our dedicated volunteers, who is a rep for a nonprofit organization, as well as a corporate entity, to share a bit about her experience as a participant. And I would like to now, at this time, bring Ms. Pamela Ziegler-Petty to our podium. Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bender, Superintendent Bonzer, and Trustees. I'm Pamela Ziegler-Petty, immediate past President, Art Center Plano. Thank you for the invitation to share my phenomenal experience as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee held October 18th and 19th. I was honored to receive the invitation to participate. I must admit, I did not know what to expect. However, after the awesome two-day experience, I was ecstatic to note that the synergy of the retreat was the catalyst for students, administrators, community, and business partners to collaborate on the importance of education in Plano. The relaxed setting encouraged engagement with fellow stakeholders, enabling us to have meaningful discussions and cohesive teamwork to build a shared understanding and future vision for Plano ISD. The outstanding facilitators encouraged a strategic team approach, allowing community and district representatives to contribute unique perspectives to the spirit of the process. At the conclusion of the retreat, there was a unified sense that we established the roadmap for the strategic planning process. I was thrilled to see familiar faces on the first day of the session. However, by the end of the second day, I felt as though I built an arsenal of friends because of this experience. The remarkable contributions of the four student representatives participating in the two-day retreat was just simply overwhelming. I was amazed by their unwavering commitment to the process and stellar representation of PISD students. They reminded each of us why we were there, and delivered perspectives, and highlighted the brilliance of our students. Thank you for taking such an energizing approach to strategic planning, and for inviting me to share my brief reflections with you this evening. We will now play a video of an academy high school student to tell you, in her own words, her strategic planning experience.
Hello, my name is Kody Druhanska, and I'm a senior at the Plano ISD Academy High School. Recently, I had the opportunity to participate in the PISD Strategic Planning Meeting, and I was blown away by the experience. As a student, I felt extremely heard and valued, and I really appreciated how all the stakeholders in our community, whether it was the parents, the teachers, administrators, local business partners, how they all cared about the future of the district and about each and every student as a person. Now, I want to bring a strategic planning meeting to my school.
Pamela, thank you so much for helping us at the podium this evening. She and I are also pals now as a result of our process and working together, so friends were made all around, I think. I would like to offer thanks to Jonathan Miller, who did all of the candid photography that you're seeing in the room, who was there that day, as well as members of our staff. Brianna Gray also was there to help move along the process, as well as members of the superintendent staff, who you might want to mention, Sarah. But with that, I'll turn it over to you. Before I do, let me share one last thing with you. We all were asked to share words at the end of the process that we were reflecting on as we were drawing those two days to a close. You have a word cloud in your notes, and I would just point out, for the audience's benefit, that the most popular words were proud, optimistic, encouraged, and inspired. Thank you. Sarah?
I just want to thank everyone in the room who was a part of the process, and Pamela for being a part of the team and coming tonight to share your reflections on the process.
Absolutely.
That means the world to us, and thank you so much for being a part of the Plano ISD family.
I absolutely appreciate the opportunity to participate, and it was phenomenal. Thank you so much.
I'm so glad to hear that. That was the point. Sharon Nowak and Nancy Scroggins from my staff also were very pivotal in pulling the whole thing off, because the facilitators told us we should invite about 50 people, and when it came to the end, we're like, well, we have 75, let's figure that out. And they did, and so, we really appreciated that. And for the three board members who participated, thank you so much for your input and your time. We ask and ask and ask, and you continue to give and give and give. And so, Dr. Solomon and Ms. Bender and Tammy Richards, thank you for volunteering for an extra tour of duty at Strategic Plan and to the Cabinet, all the work in preparation that went into the backside of the event. Carla, your staff, thanks so much. We're in the middle of the process, but what an exciting opportunity for the district, and what a great event that was to kick us off with the community. Well, if you all have any words, feel free to share.
I'd like to say, just on behalf of myself, thank you to all the work that was done to put in to get that. Thank you for our community members coming in. I think our corporate partners, I think that's important that we have that. Thank you all, to the group here at the podium that was able to take two days out of your work schedules to do this, but, you know, as Sarah mentioned, we're about halfway through, and we've done a whole lot of work already, but I'm really excited about the work yet to do.
I'm just excited to report, we were all allowed to suggest people to participate, and to a person, I heard from every single one of my folks that I suggested, and their enthusiasm and their excitement, and the word "hope" was used on what it'd be. It was a great day, so it was really great to hear, get that feedback.
I have some comments that I was given back from the person, one of the people that I appointed. She said, "Have you ever been asked to do something new and gone in thinking it was going to be one thing, and then it turned out to be something, this other completely amazing thing? It was humbling and hope-filled to be in a room full of teachers, administrators, students, and community members that all care so much about our district and our students. I'm so encouraged for the future of PISD and the confident, capable graduates it is dedicated to shepherding into this world." So, that speaks volumes.
I'd like to say, it was a fun process. It was two days that, it was raining outside, so we couldn't go out, but it was a great session. To the person who was there speaking at the podium, just out of curiosity, did you ever attend Leadership Plano, and if so, what class was that?
Was she in your class?
Tammy, do you want to say anything?
Yes, it was a very positive experience, and what I particularly appreciated is people felt free to speak their mind and speak their experience. And so, it wasn't a two-day session of rubber stamping, it was a day of really wanting to understand who we are and who we want to be. So, that was a very positive part of it.
It was, I know there was tremendous effort invested here to prepare for that. So, thank you very much for all the time and energy that all of you put into that. It paid off, because it was not only productive, but it was super enjoyable, and it was artful the way it turned out, and it was so exciting to see our students engage, and it was so awesome to see the product. And we're not going to tell you what the product is yet, because the Board has to approve it yet, and there's still work to be done. So, as I'm looking at the timeline, we will have another retreat in March, and between now and then, these teams are going to work. These action teams are going, are being defined, and they're going to work to define, you know, what will happen next. So, the final plan will be presented to the Board in April, so more to come in the spring.
As this report draws to a close, I would like to mention one thing. We did have a lot of energy in the room that day, and some of that was brought by Mr. Rutledge-Haggard. He was a special guest that day to offer kind of a historical setting for where we've been and the many roads that we've gone down that led us to that two-day retreat, and he was a very gracious host as well. So, we so appreciated his involvement, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention him.
And I'll share a little interesting historical tidbit with you. I did not know this. He was talking about Barksdale, the original Barksdale School. So, his family dominated the land and built that school. And when we put, when that Barksdale School went away, he has it, and he built a barn around it. So, it's inside of one of his barns. So, it's kind of a fun little thing that he shared. It's fun. Who knew?
All right. Now, Carla Oliver will begin to present the 2019-20 instructional calendar drafts to the Board of Trustees for review.
Yes, thank you, President Bender. We have two drafts for your review this evening. And I believe, yes, thank you, I believe Les is going to pull up the first slide. Draft A actually is almost an exact copy of the calendar that we're living right now for the 18-19 academic year. I would say a couple of features of this 19-20 calendar, again, I call it instructional calendar, academic calendar, features a Monday start, which would be Monday, August the 12th. It consists of a total of 177 instructional days, and the last day of school would conclude before Memorial Day. On the draft that you have in your notes, you can notice that the first grading period would have 44 days, the second grading period concluding before winter break is 43 days. The last two grading periods in the second semester, the first would be 42, the last would be 48, bringing first semester days to 87, and the second semester days to 90. Am I saying that correctly? This is very small for me.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Yes, it clearly says 90. I just needed to make sure of that. Do you have any questions on this particular draft before I share the second in comparison? And again, these are presented for your consideration this evening. They're not, this would be a review for you, and during the time of consideration, we'll also be soliciting additional input from multiple sources. I did have the opportunity to visit with our Student Advisory Council. The opportunity presented itself, and we just asked for feedback on this current calendar, and they were very generous with their feedback, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you can think of any, but at this point, I feel like they gave us what they were interested in, and most, if not all, of what they mentioned would be reflected in either of these choices. They appreciated the balanced semesters and the effort that the Board is making to do that, probably more so than anything. Their concern about a shortened summer, this current calendar would be alleviated with the new year coming in, but they did mention that, so I thought I would share that. So, other than that, I think most of their comments, unless Ms. Bonzer can think of something else, I would say that their concerns or comments were addressed. And so, with that, I don't see any questions yet, so let's move to Draft B, if you will. This calendar features a Wednesday start, which would be Wednesday, August the 14th, so a little later in the week than Calendar A. Also, it features 177 instructional days, like the prior calendar. However, the last day of instruction would occur after Memorial Day, and so, school would conclude with the last instructional day being on May the 27th, which is a Wednesday. Again, in this particular model, the first semester consists of 85 days, and the second semester would consist of 92.
Now, I have a question.
Okay.
All right. In the facility that we use for graduation, what do you know about its availability for either scenario? So, under the first scenario, Draft A, the soonest graduation could happen would be the next day, right? Knowing that Frisco also uses that facility and has priority.
Correct.
That's probably sooner than they would be using it?
Yes, and it would be fair to say, sooner than we've been able to host it in the past.
Right. So, do you have any information about the availability of that facility under A and B?
No, at this point, it would all be considered very tentative. That has not been decided. Right now, we feel comfortable where we've been able to return also for this current year that we're serving in. It would probably, our most likely date would arrive the same as it will this year, which for us would be June 4.
Wow. That's a long time.
And that's no guarantee. If we could angle for something earlier, certainly, there's the try. I'm sorry, let me make that correction. I'm thinking too far back. It would be on that Saturday.
30th?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The 6th?
It would be the 6th.
Oh.
And if we could get earlier than that, certainly, we would try, but just like this year.
Well, that's what I want to know about.
Right. And we can get that information as quickly as possible, but right now, that's not possible for us. We've already begun that conversation.
Okay. Frisco has adopted their calendar. When do they end?
I don't remember off the top of my head. There's someone in the audience who may be able to help me. Seeing no takers.
Well, we can look it up.
Right. And I can look it up while we're here at the meeting, if you'd like, and come back to that.
I'd like to know that. I mean, I don't like having three weeks in between.
Oh, I agree.
Because kids won't come back, we'll get a lot of complaints.
Without saying too much, I will say, we were a little concerned with the current calendar that we're under, with graduation falling where it will for us this year. calendar that we're under, with graduation falling where it will for us this year. And I think that'll be a good test model to see if our crowd has any bearing on with their attendance or lack of attendance.
Because this current year is the 10th, it's not the 28th.
But I personally wouldn't make any decisions about the other 11 grades of children around our graduating seniors. I think calendar A is a wonderful calendar. I love the balance in semesters. I love the fact that the nine-week grading periods end and then there's some sort of break. I like the fact that it ends before Labor Day. I think to start two days later under calendar B and then have to go after Labor Day for two days is not a good plan. And that also gives some uneven advantage for students taking final exams, where if your final comes later, you'll get word from your friends and you'll have the whole Memorial Day weekend to work. So I don't see any reason that I wouldn't favor strongly calendar A. I also like the fact that the fall break is on Monday, Tuesday, to let kids do their college visit visits.
That also gave us, that was reinforced a bit from our student group that we visited with. And my sweet colleague Beth has also brought up that the adopted calendar by Frisco ISD does end after Memorial Day. So there's that factor.
I have to agree.
In fact, their last day, I'm sorry, Ms. Humphrey.
Excuse me.
Their last day is Thursday, the 28th of 2020.
I agree wholeheartedly with the reasons that you gave. We've asked for years to try to get balanced semesters. I think with our legislators, we've always explained how important that is for our students. And that split after Memorial Day, I think it does give an unfair advantage to some students who are given an extra couple of days to study for an exam. I just feel like we're looking at starting two days, either a Wednesday or a Monday in August. I think that the impact of that, coming back after Memorial Day is more hurtful than that earlier two-day start in August.
I did get a news flash while I was here that mentions our negotiations are at a standstill until Frisco ISD selects their graduation date, and they have not yet done so for 2020.
I completely agree with the balancing of the calendars as a classroom teacher, especially for secondary. It gets really hard when you have semesters that are different lengths. However, having also been an elementary school teacher, I can't tell you how wonderful it is to have that first week be a three-day week, especially for kindergartners and first graders. If you can remember, recall the breakdowns that smaller humans have after having five full days of instruction after having a summer off. So even though I completely agree, big picture of the balance, I really, really do support. And I think teachers also, it's a week of trial and error. And it's great for it only to be three days. And then you have the weekend to regroup and re-figure out how things work. And so it's a really nice way of starting off a year is having that three-day start.
So I'll start by saying that I would be, I'm happy with either of these. I don't really have a hard feeling about either one of them. One thing I would point out, though, is in A, we're getting 44 days during the first grading period and then 48 in the very last. And then in B, there's a couple of days that are subtracted from first grading period and added to the last one. It's during that last grading period when all of our statewide testing is going on. So we're losing days in that last grading period. That B gives you a little bit more cushion. But you know, if I'm sitting here trying to weigh the difference between what I'd rather have, a couple of extra days in the first semester when probably you've got more focus versus the tail end of the year where kids are worried about what's going on in the summertime perhaps, I'd probably lean to A. As if that was the analysis. But like I said, I like both of these. I love both of these.
Well, when you bring up the testing, when are AP exams administered?
Throughout the month of May.
Okay. Because I always hear students say, "Well, once that exam, we don't do anything else." And I'd like to minimize that.
Much closer to the end of the school year now, to the end a little earlier than the beginning.
What was the rationale for B?
I'm sorry?
What was the rationale for B? To start two days later and finish after?
Just the request made for me, and it's been very typical as in previous years until we really started making big changes in the calendar, is that we always would offer a Monday start, usually with one being within, in compliance with the law of the fourth Monday. With that being removed as a member of the DOI, District of Innovation, I still offered a Monday start, which has been traditional. But we typically have a request to see a model that shows a bit of a later start with a midweek start because of some of the comments that Ms. Chambers shared.
Shorter week, first week.
Right. So that's the only reason that that's being offered, just so you'll have to kind of compare.
Can you talk for a minute about the way in which, I know, I believe you've been seeking some feedback?
Yes.
Can you talk about what you're doing in that area?
I'll be happy to. In fact, I wanted to bring one little piece up from earlier today. Pardon if I'm not speaking directly into the microphone. Prior to this evening, we, these of course became public with our Board Book Publishing, but they've not been shared. They've not, not before you see them. But during the time of review, before you actually adopt the calendar, it will be widely shared and ask for opinions. However, two groups that I was able to capitalize on, one I've already mentioned to you, the Student Advisory Council that serves our cabinet and Superintendent Bonzer. Also, we had the opportunity to share it with our PTA Council Board this morning. They definitely preferred, and then again, this is anecdotal from our PTA because I don't, there was no electronic capture or anything. This was just from speaking. They absolutely preferred a Monday start and they did not prefer to come back after Memorial Day. So following tonight, and at whatever you advise, but it will go on our website. We have also conducted, I'd like to say a survey, but it's really more opinion. It's not a choice because our board ultimately makes the adoption of the calendar and so that's your choice, but it offered feedback. But we'll go widespread with our faculty council, sharing it with our campuses, again with students, through the advisory council, and all the groups that we can. Also, key communicators, you know, as we've mentioned to you, is sort of evolving, but we still have access to that group of folks that we can get electronic feedback from. And so any choice of group that we can, we try to get that information back and then qualify that back in a report to you so that you'll have that prior to making the adoption.
So in terms of next steps, I'm not hearing any discussion about wanting yet another option.
Thank you.
So I think that the two that you've presented seem to be, you know, one way or another.
Fiable options.
Fiable options. When would you like to have a calendar adopted? What timeline?
Well, I certainly don't want to put the board on the spot. I think there's some benefit. Our board has, in the past, told me that you'd like to adopt as quickly as possible without rushing, but it would be reasonable to have an early adoption because we have so many people in our community that have so many decisions pending on an adopted calendar. So with that, I would love to have an adoption in December. If you feel like that's too soon, I would hope for no later than January.
Do you think we will have time to have constituent groups get their messages back to us in that amount of time?
I would do my very best to make sure that happens. And yes, I think that's possible.
Here's a suggestion. If we target, where are we? We're in November 6.
We're in the boardroom.
I know. It hurts. It's November 6.
Okay. So if we targeted a decision at our December meeting, I think it's December 6?
December 11.
11. Okay. So for the next meeting, which would be a work session, would it be possible to have any feedback?
That's next week.
Collective?
No.
Is it next week? Oh, that's right. Because we had.
Yeah, the dates are a little different because of our October.
Yes, so can you?
I can. I can't tell you how much feedback that would have, but I would bring you some feedback.
So I would just, here's what I was thinking. If you can go out and socialize this and kind of give us some feedback, that will help us, that will help you to say, you know, given what we're saying, in concert with what you're hearing, which one does it make sense to bring back? A or B? I'm just looking for a little bit more info.
Of course.
I mean, I'm hearing a lean toward A mostly. I'm with David. I'm fine with either one. You know, I really appreciate what you're saying, Jerry. So it's either, are we going to manage the front end? You know, the young ones are going to manage the back end? I'd like to, you know, have the capacity to get graduation over with sooner rather than later. So I feel like if we had an A calendar and had the ability to go before another district went, then we could be done. If that were even a possibility. If you say that's not even a possibility because there, I know it has, there are lots of mechanics that have to happen to turn that around.
Correct.
It might not even be reasonable. Then that's not a factor in the decision-making process then, for me.
One group that I failed to mention that would also be an influencer group that I think would be an informed audience to give some feedback would be our DBIC group. As well, one question, and forgive me, I don't know if I need an answer on this right now because I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss it with Superintendent Bonzer. But do, how social do we want to go with our calendar drafts? Certainly, they're available for public view right now with our agenda, but we've not done that in the past while you're trying to make your decision. So if you would give that some thought, I'll take my direction from Superintendent Bonzer with that. But there's also that possibility.
I do want to add that the thing that's troublesome about B is having only two days after Memorial Day. I mean, that's just weird with exams. And I wonder if it would be possible, I mean, I don't know if it would be done, to have three days after Memorial Day and put an extra day in somewhere, just because that's just, that would be troublesome on the back end. That makes B less attractive, I guess.
Theoretically, we should have 180 days total.
To Dr. Solomon's point, our district in the past has optioned no more than three professional learning days with using those as made available by the state. You can use up to five. And there's also some very creative calendaring that can happen with minutes of the day, which we have many, I don't want to say restrictions on, but we are talking about mechanics, to use your word, Ms. Bender. There are some mechanics involved with our busing schedule and such that limit us a bit on that. But to his point, we are optioning three days that bring us to 177 versus 180.
I would just say, as a working mother, the Friday before school started and the Monday of school start were basically the same day. Kids are on the same schedule. So it wasn't a change for us as a family.
Do you need more information from us at this time? Do you need more direction?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. So if you could just get some feedback and then, I know you won't have time to get it back to Boarding, but get it to us so that we can learn.
I have a couple of comments that I wanted to add, not specifically related to the calendar. Well, they are related to the calendar, but not to when we start and when we end. There are five days, if I counted correctly, that are marked with this diamond of faith acknowledgement. And one of them is actually Christmas and it's already vacation. The other one is a bad weather day. And that leaves three. And I just want to make sure that we do follow what we, the procedure, that we don't hold any special activities, any, what do we call them, major evaluations or major activities that are within our control. Because I've been hearing this year again, I know it's a new practice and we just need to be rigorous about making sure that principals and teachers do know.
Thank you for that reminder. We'll continue to reinforce that message. Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah. You know, sometimes I hear about it after the fact. You know that we had a test on that day. Well, you should have said something when you knew that there was a test. And in cases where somebody brings it up and the teacher didn't know ahead of time, every time I heard that the teachers and principals were accommodating and did change, did move, it just, you know, I presume as a teacher, you don't want to hear about it the day before because you didn't know about it ahead of time and hear about it from a student and then go research and find out and start shifting things at last minute. So if we can just reinforce that. The second one is just for us, for the board and Sarah and the administration, I still want us to consider at some point year-round school, especially for the economically disadvantage where this really makes a difference. So whatever activities we can have during the summer that would prevent them from falling back, that's where we can make a difference. So I want us to still keep that in mind.
Any other comments?
Yes, I actually believe that I would agree with Jerry about draft B because I actually like the Wednesday start. It'll be an easier transition for our younger students and also for our special population, special education population. And I also agree with Jerry too, if we can somehow have it on the 28th, May 28th, I agree that that would be a good end. And I also agree with Yorm. I do believe a year-round school would be good for our students too.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Okay. Thank you, Carla. Our final report this evening, the district will provide an overview of legislative priorities, tax parity efforts, and advocacy activities for the upcoming 86th Legislative Session for Board Discussion. Sarah, would you like to begin this process? Excellent.
I'm going to turn the microphone over to Carla Oliver and she's going to give us a report on current actions as we prepare for the upcoming Legislative Session. And then we have a little bit of information to share about the process that we're taking in. Shall I walk you through? Carla?
Thank you. In your report and in your study documents, you saw that we provided another copy and another opportunity to become familiar with our legislative priorities. For our viewing audience, they are available on our website in the advocacy area related to legislative priorities. There's that piece. And that started us on our content for the reports that you have in your binders. Would any of you like to ask questions about those priorities in any way? Or would you like to move forward? The reason I ask is there are graphics that we can share and I'd like to move on through, but I didn't want to overlook the chance that you might want to share something with our viewing audience. Okay, thank you.
Well, the only comment I would have is with priority E. And that's, again, I'd like us to just adopt the TASB language.
Why?
I mean, this is, I know it's crazy for me to say adopt the TASB language, but still, they have languages that I think makes more sense. Just add that last sentence after public education that do not meet the accountability and transparency system.
Since this is just a report, we're not taking it.
Right. Well, it's just a comment.
Okay.
That I feel obligated to.
Okay. Why don't we just state what the two priorities are at the high level? Number one is the Texas, our priorities are related to the Texas State Share of Funding for Public Education K-12. And the other one is about property tax relief. So all of our
Thank you, President Bender.
efforts are kind of around those two main categories.
And again, I would invite those in the audience and our viewing audience to please check that out on our website. That's available. And certainly, our office can offer feedback on any questions they may have regarding that. A big part of our legislative priorities in the last couple of years have been our tax parity efforts. And no one has worked any harder on that effort than our Board of Trustees. I would like to share that we recently had a newspaper ad. Some of these graphics will be familiar to you. We are also printing a note card that will be with this as well. And let me see. Yes, there we go. I can click through. So the ad itself, you also have a hard copy of that at your desk. That's a newspaper and it's flagged so that you can see the full-page ad that was placed in the Plano Star Courier. And then again, we'll have a graphic, a go-home graphic that will mimic that. And this is the information contained. And this is just for the benefit of our audience to see. We've had nice feedback or at least a nod from folks who have seen this and just, again, anecdotally said, saw the information. Appreciate what you're doing. And then also, I'd like to share that specifically President Bender and Nancy Humphrey, our secretary, have been very diligent, I think, in making presentations regarding tax parity. And I tugged out a couple of the slides from their overall presentation that I thought you might want to see and that our audience might like to see. And again, that is also available on our website, but they have been very gracious with their time for those who may, for groups or individuals who may be interested in scheduling a trustee to come and present this very vital information. And we'll wait to see if that slide pops up. I can just share, I popped out two of what I thought were biggies regarding some general information. So this is our title slide, which would be familiar to you. Again, not unfamiliar to you. You pay your taxes. Now pay attention. Again, not unfamiliar to you, "You Pay Your Taxes, Now Pay Attention." Here, with the heading of "It's Simple Math," "You Pay More, Yet Schools Get Less, And It Doesn't Add Up." So I'll invite with that slide and with the following, that shows the 12% drop in a span of years from in 2008 and 2019, if President Bender, you, or Ms. Humphrey would like to say anything about your presentations.
Nancy, I'll introduce a couple of things and turn it over to you, is that okay? So, what I wanted to do with this item is to let the Board know kind of where we're going with, where we've been talking about going with tax parity. And then, invite you, if you want to, to have access to this presentation that Nancy and I have been, you know, modified from last time, and, you know, invite you to start making that presentation if you want to, in different, you know, settings. So, last session, when we, you know, came up with this idea of tax parity, it's really intended to inform the public about where their money is going, where it's collected, when we collect it, and then where it's going and how it's spent, because not all of it is staying here. We're trying to illuminate that, so that the public can learn enough to get outraged enough to go and do something, you know, communicate with their legislators. So we're trying to affect public opinion to change outcomes. I think that elevated the conversation, and there was a lot of dialogue about state share. We're hearing that all the time now. But as we thought about, what do we need to do now to, what's our Tax Parity 2.0? The next layer of the conversation is, well, what is it, what is it doing here at home in Plano ISD? So, in the presentation, we started communicating, we did it to two different parent groups. Remember, we've talked about the four-year budget implications, as we continue to give a 2% raise each year, if that is the case. As our recapture bill goes up a new $50 million each year, what does that mean? Well, we know this is year one of deficit budgeting. And, so, we're down 6.7 million this year. Six point seven million deficit budget. Next year, we'll be almost 24 million deficit budget. The next year will be 25 million deficit budget. The next year will be another 41.7 million deficit budget, totaling $97.3 million deficit budgeting. Where does that money come from? Well, we have a savings account that we've been putting money into for this particular occasion, and at the end of four years, we will no longer be able to operate at the same level unless we go to the bank and borrow money and begin to pay interest. And, we'll have to then begin significant budget talks if there is no school finance remedy from the legislature. So, that whole conversation about, you know, what this means, we're bringing it home, right? And I think it really got the attention of the parents that we talked to, and they gave us feedback on what messaging they thought was working and what wasn't working that we can improve upon. So we're trying to take that feedback and incorporate that into our messaging to simplify it, and hone in on the action that we want to ask them to consider taking.
By the way, one comment I'd like to add is, there's the $40 million that we're going to incur if property taxes, property values level off, because recapture is a year behind. I think, you know, every time I make this statement, and I talk about 96 now, I say it's 97 million dollars deficit, and then I say, oh, by the way, if property taxes, if property values level off, I think maybe it would make sense to just build it into this model and say, within the next four years, it's a reasonable expectation that it would level off, because now you're talking about $137 million.
So that would reduce the timeline from four years to even potentially a shorter timeline.
Well, we have to see what happens in this next Legislative Session, because they may change and get rid of recapture, we just don't know. But you could put it as a tentative, I guess.
I would just say, if we're talking about a deficit, an incremental deficit of, or cumulative deficit of 97 million, and there is a reasonable expectation that property values are not going to continue at 8% and are going to level off, you know, I'm not saying model that they're going down, which happened in the past, but just model that they're leveling off, because those numbers are going to be $40 million worse.
You could give a scenario, if it was at zero growth, or 5% growth, or 9% growth, and then see where that
How long we last.
Yeah, because we can't predict what property values are going to do, but that could, it could be from $0 to $40 million.
We're predicting 8% growth year over year.
That's been consistent, but you're right. When it does, if the bubble pops and the markets change, at some point, we could be liable to up to 40 million, so I think we could give a range. I wouldn't be able to say when that zero growth is going to happen.
If we want to do a range, then let's build in another model that says we have another recession and prices, values are actually going down, that gets even worse with the current situation. And then, we can say, you know what, it's between 97, if it continues to climb 8% every year, to, it's going to be beyond 137, it's going to be more than that.
So, the main thing is that I wanted you to know that we're incorporating not just that message that we started with, but we're incorporating our reality of how that affects Plano ISD. So, the future, we've had a marketing plan that has been developed for this effort, and so we're implementing, beginning to implement those recommendations by, we now have a new social media resource in the school district who's working with this program, and we're making changes to our presentation messaging and the website. So, I just wanted to make sure that you knew as we're going into session, that we're updating and we're reflecting the current reality in this presentation. And if you, if you want to get involved in, you know, making these presentations, we've got it ready to tool that for you.
And we're ready to go to talk to anyone. It doesn't have to be a PTA, it can be a PTA, it could be a homeowners group, or anyone who wants to hear the message and understand it. I know it gets complex, but when you look at 2008, and then you fast-forward to 2019, and we're $1,110 funded less, $1,110 per student less than 2008, that's, that's really scary, especially when you look at our demographics. So, we're happy to share this information, so that we can encourage our legislators to develop the right solution for school finance.
Carla, do you want to talk about, this is just a part of the legislative messaging we wanted to share with you. Can you talk about what we're going to do in December?
I will, thank you for that opportunity. Typically, going into a Legislative Session, we host a delegation meeting of our local folks and any invited guests that we want to include in that invitation in the month of December. We don't have that date as of yet, but I think that's still very intentional, unless, Missy, y'all have done some work on that, and you've selected a likely date?
Well, I talked to, one of the things I wanted to share with you is that we've hired, the district has hired Davis Advocates
Yes, that was my next point.
So in conversation with them, they're suggesting maybe a slightly different strategy, rather than that big
Invitational?
Occasion?
Yes.
Maybe more conversational, smaller
Smaller groups.
Groups, so it's more of a working meeting?
And the group to which she's referring to is Davis Advocates, you mentioned their name. They are working jointly with us, with the City of Plano, and with the Chamber of, Plano Chamber of Commerce, and we have sort of a uniform purpose as far as communicating with the community at large about all of the different legislative agendas, those issues that we share, and then those that might be unique to our own organizations. And so, it's likely that you'll be hearing from one or more of those folks that represent Davis Advocates. We've been on the phone together, spent some time together in meeting, as Ms. Bender indicated. So likely, in the month of December or immediately following that, you'll be seeing some of them become a part of these legislative updates at our board meetings. And so, they'll be attending with us and offering some guidance and maybe some of their know-how from prior sessions about maybe changing formats of some of our past practices.
One of the things that we asked for was a common scorecard. So, since they're working with all the entities here in Plano, we can have a common approach and share that approach with our, you know, elected officials in advance of session. And I think there's some, you know, we've started that a couple of sessions ago, I think we're evolving, and we're, you know, hopefully this will help us to hit our speed or hit our stride a little bit.
We hope for that to be reflective across our organizations, and then also, give us the opportunity to tell our delegation when scorecard issues are ready for a vote. So, like, just a heads up, you know, this is important to us, and offer our immediate feedback and be as available to them as necessary as they make very informed decisions on their constituents' behalf.
So will the Davis Advocates Group be following bills specifically for education?
Yes.
And then, what other entities we're working with, their priorities as well?
Correct. And so, again, some of our issues are shared, and some are very specific, but I think we'll get a bit broader wingspan, I think, of coverage by joining this effort, by using this group in concert with the Plano Chamber as well as the city. That doesn't mean that we get less attention or less effort toward our own priorities, of course. I think they'll give us the opportunity, maybe even hone in a little more specifically on those ourselves, knowing that the scorecard will all be together, and you'll see samples of that in December. We've already made an invitation to have someone come and be with us at a meeting in December, and then thereafter, I'm sure it will be very commonplace. Also, I'll mention, during this time, we'll also be connecting to all the other groups outside of this board meeting setting to talk about legislative priorities. Our PTA is very engaged legislatively, and so they're asking to share information back and forth with us. Again, some shared issues and some that necessarily aren't on each other's list, but we need to know about those. I will, as a courtesy, mention that on November the 15th, President Bender is serving on a panel at Harrington Library, and so I wanted to mention that for the general audience as well.
I saw the work that's done, but I think we need to do one more thing, and that's the 30-second elevator speech. If we really want to engage our community at large in this, we need to give them 30 seconds and three points. My husband hears we talk about this all the time, if you ask him to actually give a succinct summary, he probably couldn't do so. And so, if we really want everybody helping, everyone, the audience to be able to say what's going on, we are, need to bubble up the very most important things and serve those up to our community.
Thank you.
And that's what this marketing plan has helped us to do. So it's not fully implemented yet, but we have, this is, it was a volunteer that did this for us, a professional, that's also one of our parents, that believes in this effort. So we're working to figure out that very finite message.
And some objective views from someone like a volunteer and someone like the agency that we've been talking about, these are very energetic, highly-charged topics for all of our organizations that come together, and sometimes, a little different perspective can help us narrow in and kind of throw out the things that may be emotional for us, but may not be the most informative to the broad audience, and that's something that we're working to do now.
I was at the Plano ISD, sorry, Council PTA's meeting today, and they talked about their legislative priorities, that they're going to vote on at their next general meeting. And it's a complete crosswalk, we share the same priorities. The one that they put a spotlight on that isn't necessarily listed in ours is safety, which we also very much are behind. But there's this funding, safety, vouchers, and pre-K, so there's a short and sweet, but we totally share across both lines.
Thank you for outlining those.
And one of the things with our safety item was a focus on social and emotional learning, so we really is a connection.
All right.
You can probably take out the slide before last, from the President, the one that says "Election Day, this is November 16th."
We can do that. All right, thank you, Carla, appreciate that. All right, item 10, Items for Discussion and Action. Our first item for discussion and action this evening supports the district's goal to ensure financial resources and budgeting. At this time, the Board will consider approval of a resolution adopting the 2018 property tax rule as required by Section 26.09 of the Texas Property Tax Code. Randy?
I guess we do have a resolution for your consideration or not, that approves a total tax levy of $752,085,492.59, and also the property tax role as indicated. And that resolution is included.
Okay, Nancy, would you like to read the resolution?
Would I?
Would you love to read the resolution?
I would love to read it, okay. We have a resolution adopting the 2018 property tax rule, whereas, Section 26.09 of the Property Tax Code requires approval by the governing body of the Plano Independent School District of the property tax role prepared by the Collin County Tax Assessor, and whereas, on November 6, 2018, the Board of Trustees of the Plano Independent School District met in open session to adopt the 2018 property tax role, and whereas, such role was presented to the Plano Independent School District's trustees on November 6, 2018, and appears in all things correct as under the applicable laws of Texas, and whereas, said trustees voted in open session to approve said role. It is hereby resolved by the trustees of the Plano Independent School District that the property tax role with a taxable value of $54,468,798, and three, it's so long, I can't say it, $798,361, and a total levy of $752,85,492.59 for the year 2018 is approved. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
A motion that the Board of Trustees adopts and approves the 2018 property tax role and approves the resolution adopting the 2018 property tax role as submitted.
Do I have a second?
A second?
I have a motion by Jerry Chambers, a second by Nancy Humphrey, that the Board of Trustees adopts and approves the 2018 property tax role and approves the resolution adopting the 2018 property tax role as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll now proceed to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. The next three items for discussion and action ensure governance and administrative support of district goals. Policy VQ Legal and VQ Local require the Board to ensure that a district improvement plan and improvement plans for each campus are developed, reviewed, and revised annually for the purpose of improving the performance of all students. Dr. Dash Wiersinger, Senior Executive Director for Assessment, Research, and Program Evaluation, will present a district improvement plan that was approved by the District-Based Improvement Committee. Dash?
Thank you. Thank you, good President Trustees. On behalf of the District-Based Improvement Committee, I'm going to present the DBIC Plan, which commonly referred to as the District Improvement Plan. The, just to little bit summarize the work here, kind of a timeline, we started this work in spring, you know, we were analyzing the frameworks of instruction, and one of the things that we launched as district-wide was the High Reliability School Network Implementation. So we began with that in March, and there was professional learning associated with it, and a district-wide plan to implement it, and that's continuing throughout the year. Then, that was followed up with work that was done when the STAR results came back in June, and also training all campuses in the campus improvement planning process on how to analyze the data, embedding ourselves from central office with the campus team, so that was also part of the district improvement planning process. And then, the last bit of information on this process was then when the accountability results were released in August, and then, those compliance pieces came in to kind of blend into the campus improvement plan. So, there's just a little bit of how the policy states and the role of the district improvement plan is officially at the state level, it is called the District Level Planning and Decision-Making Committee in DQ and DQ Local. So, it is, it shall advise the Board and its designee, in this case, the Superintendent, on the educational goals and objectives that are district-wide. It will serve as an advisory role and shall approve all developments, all staff development efforts across the district. So there are kind of few things that So there are kind of few things that, that few rules that it has to abide by and this is also by Texas Education Code. There are 30 members that represent professional staff, parents and parents of students enrolled in the district, business representatives and community members. At least two-thirds of the elected staff have to be teachers, classroom teachers, and this is also split proportionately for elementary and secondary. And then committees should have at least three meetings per year. So we have scheduled those three meetings and we had our very first meeting on October 29 last week. And you also have to hold at least one public meeting per year and this one will serve as the representative from DBIC as the one under the public meetings. And we most probably need to have, at our January meeting, I'm sorry, February meeting in DBIC, we will also formally approve our professional development plan going forward for the next school year. We approve that about, about a year ahead. So committee is tasked with doing three primary things, not at the exclusion of others. So shall assist the superintendent with the annual development evaluation and revision of the district improvement plan, shall analyze information related to dropout prevention and shall approve staff development of a district-wide nature. And we have shared in your board documents the district improvement plan and the bullet number one is addressed in detail there. On bullet number two, let me give you a quick revision. We do a great job on our dropout prevention efforts. We have about, depending on how you start, for example, we start about with about 4,300 students in our graduating class in ninth grade for 2017 class. And in between grade nine and grade 12, about four, 500 students left to enroll in other districts and we gained about, about 500 students from other districts in that same graduating class. So out of that graduating class, only 55 students dropped out. So that's about 1.2% and we maintain that rate pretty much consistently over several years and that's a lot lower than rate. And if you have any other questions about dropout prevention, the expert is down there in Mark Callen and it is a tremendous effort trying to recover students and hook them in, in alternative plans. The, so, so we have seven critical actions in our district improvement plan and there was tremendous effort that went into analyzing the data, especially from the, our academic services department. We had teams of from elementary, secondary, multilingual departments, special ed departments. So the key groups of staff that monitor the district progress were involved in the development of this. And the first critical action is related to reading. And we, we followed as an exemplar exactly what we asked campuses to do with our campus improvement planning process. We do the, we analyze the data, you write the problem statement and then we identify what the root causes are and then come up with a critical action to address it. So in the detailed plan that is in your board book, you have what are the strategies that are used to address this critical action as well as individual action steps and evidence of implementation and, and outcomes. The, on each of these critical actions, you will notice there's a domain three goal attached to it and that is TEA and federal requirement regard because we are considered a Title I district. And any of the student groups that misses in the new accountability system in domain three, we had to address that specifically in the district improvement plan. So do campuses have to address theirs in their campus improvement plan? So American Indian student group in reading and Pacific Islander student group, they, they fell below the statewide target, so we are specifically addressing them on the Just to put some context here, we, we have 66 American Indian students that were included in this, in district-wide and 27 Pacific Islanders. So you're talking about each student that counts for 3% or more than 1%. So there's little margin for us to deviate from these errors because a couple of students and we missed it in each case by three students and five students. So because they account for so much of a percentage. The critical action two is in math and this is grades three through eight and algebra. And that's a domain three target on the Pacific Islanders included here too. And critical action three is in writing. And, and, and remember, this is based on fourth and seventh grade STAR writing results. And critical action four is college career and military readiness. Now this particular one, this concept that preparing students for modern graduation, that they have a path to go straight into industry, to, to the military or to a two or four-year college or to the workforce with certifications, that's a push that is in the statewide plan. So in, in this particular category, the special ed student group, we have to address as part of our domain three targets. And graduation rate for special ed student is, is with a federal target of 90. There are slight differences here. I will address critical action five here and six, which is on graduation rate for ELL students, kind of, we'll start that conversation where in the accountability system, you get the option to use the four-year, five-year or the six-year graduation rate. And, but the federal requirement is strictly a four-year graduation rate of 90%. So, so one of the things that we are working on is ensuring that special ed students, especially those who graduate with an IEP, with a four-year IEP graduate within four years. On the, on the same topic of graduation on English language learners, these are students who are at one time were served in the English Language Learner Program in grades nine through 12. And there are, there are two groups of students here, those who have entered ninth grade from our middle schools who are already English language learners. And there are also another group here who come into mostly recent immigrants, who come in with maybe overage and maybe not sufficient credit for high school and they, they start their ninth grade. And the challenge here is they need to start, they need to master, they need to learn the English language and then also graduate. So the prospect of them graduating in four years is not very high. But the, just to, so though our four-year graduation rate, we did not meet the target of 90, our five-year graduation rate was 94%. So with an additional year of continuing in Plano ISD, they, they, they do get the credit to graduate. So in fact, the six-year graduation rate is a little bit higher than 94. So with, so there's a group of students that truly need an additional year of instruction just to gather the credit and graduate. And the very last critical action is high reliability school, the implementation. This is an effort that is district-wide and I believe at the next, in the December board meeting, we're going to go in-depth into our implementation. There are a lot of groups, in fact, a lot of groups from different departments involved in developing frameworks with professional learning embedded monthly in our principal meetings that we are launching throughout the year. So the recommended action is for the Board of Trustees to approve the district-based improvement. If you have any questions, I have.
Dash, I have a real quick question on your slide about graduation in the midst, with our English language learners. Are those students who graduate in August, is that considered an extra year or is it a full extra year?
It needs to be a full extra year. So those summer graduates who graduate by September 1st, August 30th, August 31st, they are counted with the, with the previous.
Okay, so, so we're, our, our 94% graduation rate for these students is a true five-year?
True five-year, but that may include some students who graduated in December as well as May.
Right, okay. It's just additional of the four plus.
Four plus.
Okay.
Dash, Dash, considering the critical action five graduation for special education, the thing about our special education program is exemplary and I know that it seems like we're only at 83.5% for graduation rate and we want to target 90%. The thing is that we're allowing our students to stay an extra year so they can learn better.
Well, remember, this also includes special ed students who are in inclusion, who are self-contained and there's a broad range. So get into some, we had about 400 and, we had, so we had, it's like 280, 300 students in our graduating classes who graduate, who are eligible to graduate who are special ed. And not all of them have, some of them are in regular classroom and some of them are self-contained, so there's a very broad range. So we, what we are going to do as part of the plan is to ensure that those students who should, are planning to go to a two-year, four-year college, they do graduate with their IEP in four years and some may be five years, six years, some may even go to the adult transition center and stay with us until they're 21. So there's a broad range of students and we also want to ensure that all their graduation needs are met. One of the things that we are realizing is we, this is, remember, this is, some of these are very technical, the tracking and coding and how we classify students play a large part in the special ed graduation code. That's also one of our efforts is to ensure that all that effort is done right and we have procedures in place to get all that recorded correctly.
But that's why I'm so proud that we actually have a transition school for, for our adult students, so good job.
I just have a quick question about the high reliability schools. I know that's the Marzano study that we're implementing. I noticed that some schools can get that rating. There's a rating for the different tiers within the model. How do you go about getting that certification?
Okay, so certification is a long-term plan and maybe I should let.
Oh, should we talk about this in December? I'm sorry.
Well, we can answer it tonight. I mean, we'll probably, we can bring it back again.
Okay.
Really, the, the idea behind high reliability schools is it's, it's the process that is important, not reaching a certification goal for someone externally to come and tell us you are there. We, we did that. I've been through that piece before. The concern that we have with the certification process is number one, there's an additional cost to it.
Okay.
Number two, we never feel like we should get there. I mean, this is continuous improvement work and the goal is to dig in deeply to things that are around safe and collaborative culture, effective teaching in every classroom, guaranteed and viable curriculum, so that we're doing all those things systematically and effectively in every school and giving us a common framework and language for instruction and practice. The certification is a thing on the side and we would rather focus on the process than getting the trophy. I guess that, I hope that makes sense.
Well, that's fine. I just had noticed there were a list of schools and I didn't know.
Don't tell Marzano I said that. He'll work, we'll not be happy. I, I just, that's not what the work is about.
Okay, thank you.
So you can pretty much get everything done and progress around the levels without getting the certification. Certification is just like a badge that you can put it on your website.
Perfect. Well, Dash, I want to thank you for your work and I want to make just some editorial comments to my, my colleagues. If you go to page 10 of the actual report, it talks about, you don't have to actually look, but if you go to that, it's under comprehensive needs assessment summary and it says student achievement, all campuses met the state standard. Hopefully the state standard will never become our standard because that's in the 60 percentiles and I think in Plano it ought to be these or better. So I want to make sure that we never back off on those goals. I was very pleased to see the specific percentage point increases that we're targeting for particularly economically disadvantaged students, 3% at Meats and 2% at Masters. I'm hoping before I retire as a trustee in two and a half years to have no, no schools below 70 percentile and it'd be wonderful if almost all of them were 80 percentile or above. I think that would be excellent work done as a team. I would also say, looking at the specific report plan, page 11 is one example, it's often by increasing the reading and under the root cause and strategy, it said inconsistent application of effective instruction, inconsistent implementation of effective interventions. To me, this seemed to be judging our teachers and our school leaders and I don't think that they're the issue. I think they work extraordinarily hard with the challenges they have and I think we need to consider whether it was insufficient resources given to some of these schools and as we do our planning, looking forward, what do we do differently? I'm reminded of remarks that Todd Williams of Commit made when he visited us last May, June. It's a million dollars for each of the A schools. That's 10 to 15 more people. What we did about two years ago when we gave more resources to our nine or 10 challenged schools, they all got to pick one extra person, one. And so I, I challenged my fellow trustees and top administration that we need to be bold as we enter the spring and we do our budgeting, that we're not just giving one, we're 10, if necessary.
Okay, so with the DBIC report, law says that it is something that is approved by the committee and then it comes to the board for a consideration and adoption. So are there any other comments or questions, Dash, before we undertake that? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the District-Based Improvement Committee Plan.
I second.
All right, I have a motion by Nancy Humphrey and a second by Angela Powell, that the Board of Trustees approves the District-Based Improvement Committee Plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Thank you. All right, the last item for action this evening relates to additional appointments for the board advisory committees for the 18, 2018-19 school year. They are presented for the board's approval. We had a, a request from some of the staff leaders for certain committees, for certain, you know, they wanted certain representation around that other committee. So those individuals have been identified and they are represented in, I think, yellow, purple on the attachment. Sorry, segment last item, pardon me. Originally the last item, now the segment was. May I have a motion for consideration of this new committee appointment?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the additional board advisory committee appointments for 2018, 2019 as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Yoram Solomon, a second by Jerry Chambers, that the Board of Trustees approves the additional board advisory committee appointments for the 2018-19 school year as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. The board will now address agenda item B3. It was originally pulled from the consent agenda and the title is the Recommendation of Members for the District Textbook Adoption Committee. Yoram, would you like to begin the discussion of this item and then we will ask Dr. Katrina Hasley, the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, to please present.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The first, am I understanding correctly, everybody on this list are district employees?
Yes.
So can you take us through the process of appointing people or recommending and is it an open committee and how can people get involved? What is the process of making their recommendation?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is the district-level textbook committee and it's, it is formed in response to proclamation 2019 where we will have 2019, where we will have new textbooks for going into effect next school year for mainly language arts and reading classes in kindergarten through eighth grade. So the committee is really made up of experts in their content area, their course, or their grade level, and these members are recommended by curriculum coordinators according to their curriculum experience, and also from input from campus leaders. We want to ensure we have representation from across the district and also very grade levels represented. So the work, they work alongside representatives from the district, and then they will form some subcommittees, which will include more teachers in the process to review materials that are up for adoption. The purpose of the committee is really to ensure that the materials selected are truly in alignment to our standards, and they provide the highest quality of resources that we could for our, to support our curriculum documents. The way parents can be involved is we always have an opportunity for them to view all textbooks and materials that are up for adoption. There will be, as soon as the committee is approved and work begins, there will be a link put on the district website, so they can access that. Also, if anyone wants to look at things in person, that can be arranged. And there is an opportunity for them to provide, submit comments either online or bring a form in, and all of those comments, questions, concerns will be shared with the committee before final approval and recommendations are made.
Can we just make sure that that link that allows people in the community to comment is published and they know about it? Every now and then I get comments about our textbooks, and I know that, I think it was last year that I asked Dr. Russo to provide a description of the entire process of adopting new material, and I, I remember that there was a part where the community can participate. We can just make sure that they know, and they know when.
Sure, we can do that. We'll push that out through the communications departments department.
Thank you, those were the questions I had.
So can I ask one question? Previous to this activity occurring, are the textbooks under consideration, the ones that have been previously approved by the State Board of Education?
Yes, they, they will be on the commissioners-approved list. Those are the ones that we will be looking at.
So you're trying to select from that assortment which ones best align with our curriculum and sort of-
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I want to ask a question about the committee. The thing I've noticed is that sometimes on the committees, you have parents or, or staff members who actually act, are not just within one committee, but they, they get asked to be on another committee. Will this committee be new staff members, or you're going to recycle the same staff members?
This would not be a repeat of, like, lecture textbook committee, in one reason is we'll have different content areas to be looking at. So we try to spread out the opportunities for lots of people to participate. And again, we'll also include additional people beyond this list in the subcommittees since they do work on specific grade levels.
Okay. Okay. All right, may I have a motion related to this item?
Yes, since I asked to remove it, then I move, I'm going to ask to bring it back. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommended list of members for, for the district textbook adoption committee.
And do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion by Yoram Solomon and a second by Angela Powell, that the Board of Trustees approves the recommended list of members for the district textbook adoption committee. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes, seven to zero.
And thank you for answering my questions. I know it's a kind of a last-minute thing.
Okay, we are now at item eleven, the conclusion of public comment. I will now invite speakers who signed up previous to the, prior to the start of the meeting to address the board. Ms. Oliver, do we have any comment cards for non-agenda?
Yes, ma'am, we have one. May I, or do you just have person, or did you have something else you wanted to interject?
The speaker may go ahead and come up, and I just have a little bit to say.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'll invite Kristen Trueblood Ford to come to the podium here.
Okay. So let me just say a couple of things before you begin. Fifteen minutes will be allotted for speakers, you get three. Each person gets three wishing to address the board about non-agenda topics. If you're not finished by the end of three minutes, I'll have to interrupt you and ask you to please conclude. Again, Ms. Humphrey will do the timing, she'll let you know you have two minutes left. Due to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, we will not be able to communicate with you following your, your comments shared, okay?
Would it be okay, my student has created a PowerPoint that she made copies of, could she pass them to you, or give them to you?
Yes, that's fine.
I apologize if there's not enough copies. Okay. My name is Dr. Trueblood, I am the counselor at Gwen's Special Programs here in Plano ISD, and my student, one of my students, Leona Evans, who's a tenth grader, is here, and we are here today to talk about emotional support animals, and she first will give you a brief overview of how an emotional support animal has helped her, and then I'll conclude with some brief remarks, I know we only have three minutes, about how it would
Hi, my name is Leona Evans, and before I came to SPC, SPC, I was a student at Clark High School. I suffer from major depression and severe anxiety, and I was hospitalized twice last year at the C Center, once in August and once in December for wanting to take my life. While I was there, they brought in therapy dogs, and something inside of me just clicked. Being around service dogs just calms me down. And when Angel, Dr. Trueblood's service dog, came to school, I sit in her room next to Angel and do my work. I really have bad social anxiety and can't work in classrooms with other people. I work my, I work best by myself, and with Angel really helps with my self-esteem and social anxiety.
Special Programs is a place in Plano ISD where students come for second chances. As you may know, our students are some of the most vulnerable in Plano ISD. We'd like to ask that you consider in the future passing a policy that would allow fully certified emotional support animals, as is mine. We spent over ten thousand dollars training her to be allowed to work in a controlled environment with targeted students at Special Programs or any Plano ISD school that finds value in these support animals. Our PowerPoint provided to you has information and pictures with our students, faculty, and information about my emotional support animal and her training. Special Programs is a unique school. Research has shown that emotional support animals facilitate increased motivation-
One minute.
Engagement, increased emotional support connections, and reduced absenteeism among students. So we thank you for your consideration in allowing us to speak and to allow Plano ISD to follow other school districts in North Texas and around the country in bringing these important animals into our school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you did a great job. Yes. All right, with no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.